...states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's see. I'm just gonna throw it out there. Open the floor to a motion to approve the agenda. Okay? Laura, you move. And that's to include the...
Amendments.
Amendments, okay. In the, as printed in the agenda here. B1, additional certificates classified, and B2, item E4B going to the alternative education section. Okay? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion passed. You want to make sure we understand how both of the votes... Okay. I know Jean, you are on. Dana, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure. Thank you, Dana.
And then both vote yes?
Aye.
Did both vote yes?
Yes, I did. This is Dana.
Perfect. Okay. Thanks for the clarification, y'all. Okay. Let's see. Item C. We have any, well, I guess we're not the right of correspondence yet, but we've got election of Board of Education President and Vice President under C1. So, do we have any nominations for President?
Mr. Chairman, are you doing that at the start?
Yes, sir, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Dana Hannigan for President.
Okay. We have Dana Hannigan nominated. Okay? Any other motions? Do we have a second for that nomination?
Second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second for that. Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Move to close.
I'm sorry?
Move to close.
Okay. Move to close. Do I have a second on that? Do I have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and a second. Okay. All in favor of the close, rate or say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed, same sign. We closed, so we have Dana nominated, so I guess we go ahead and vote on her. So, all in favor of Dana to be President, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion passed. Dana is President. And let me, congratulations, Dana.
Thank you. Big boost to Bill Mark. I'm not gonna be, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to sing for the teachers by the end of the year, so...
Yeah, well, I'll make a solid suggestion. Do you want to preside then? I'm gonna attempt to pass the gavel over to, Steve, do you have a nomination?
Just kind of a suggestion, since Dana, it would be kind of difficult to preside over the meeting via the phone, perhaps if you take the next step and identify a Vice President, then maybe the Vice President will preside over the remainder of the meeting.
Okay. Just as a, just to let you know, I guess we'll follow that. Dana, are you comfortable with that?
Absolutely. That'd be great. Thank you.
This is a great speakerphone. Okay, good. Well, I'll entertain nominations for Vice President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Laura Morris.
Okay.
Vice President.
Thank you. You have a nomination. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Nomination and a second. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Dr. Hannigan as Vice Chair.
Okay. We have Dr. Hannigan as well nominated. Do I have a second for that?
All second.
Okay. Motion and a second. I think we'll run it out of, but any other nominations? Okay. Hearing none. I'm, I think we're going to cease. Can I just do that?
I think you need a motion.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close?
So would.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second to close. All in favor of that, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Okay. So, that passed, and we will vote on Vice Chair. We have two nominations. We could take speeches. Anybody want to make any comment that's been nominated? Hearing none. I think we'll start with the first name nominated. Is that the way you would do this? So, all in favor for Vice President of Laura, indicate by saying aye.
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 So, that's Laura and Mark and Jean and, so that's four. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. The other three opposed, so the motion passed. So, I think that is our Vice President.
I would suggest reflecting, instead of yays and nays against me, ayes for me and ayes for Dr. Hannigan. So, I mean, I'm assuming the three who voted no for me were voting for Dr. Hannigan. That way, it doesn't necessarily reflect...
Yeah, they're of opposition.
Yeah, and I think we discussed that the last time you and I were nominated, is that it's...
Okay. Is the Board comfortable with that suggestion?
I think it's a good suggestion.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think it's a good suggestion.
I think it is as well. And, well, let me just do this. Let me just ask, can I do that with a consensus? Or do I have to go through the process of...
How about we do just rewind, and you can say, "All in favor of Laura," and then "All in favor of Dr. Hannigan," and do the vote that way? So, that vote didn't happen, and just...
Well, okay. So, I can withdraw that vote. That's why we're struggling with it.
Can you do that? I mean, we really already voted.
Yeah, I know.
They had four. You said there was four. I mean, the vote's been made.
It's a part of the question.
I think everyone understands that you're looking against Laura. Me personally, I'd like to see everyone have an opportunity. Laura's done it before, and if it would've been just her, I would've voted for her, but I wanted, and that, so, changing my vote either way, it's still gonna be the same thing.
Right.
You got four votes. That's the way it is, so...
And I'm not suggesting that the vote would be changed. Laura's suggesting it's just the way it was being set.
Reflect in the record.
It don't matter to me. I'm just saying, it really has already been voted. I mean, you called, you called for the vote, and you voted, so, you're asking me to change my vote, and that would take a different type of motion, would it not? Technically?
How about if I do this? How about if I call for the second vote, and then ask that it just simply be reflected the other way that Laura suggested? Are you, is the Board comfortable with that? Because technically, you haven't taken the second vote, but it's assumed. Why don't we take the second vote, and then let's just reflect in the record the support as Laura had suggested? To me, that's more complete than trying to do something, some other alternative. We do have a motion and a second, but we haven't voted technically.
Which was for Laura, or whatnot. So, you know, I, and I hate to muddy up the water, I really do. It's just, you have four votes, and you have three nays. And so, that is the vote. And for you to ask me to change my vote, it's still gonna, it's, I can't, I can't vote yea, 'cause I gotta vote, I gotta vote some way for her. You're gonna, you're gonna call for the question, and you gotta get four votes for her. So, what are the other three supposed to do? Say yea?
No. I think what my suggestion was, is first having, instead of having a yes or a no on vote, the motion is, the motion is, who are you voting for? So, there were, to reflect that there are four ayes, and then three ayes for Dr. Hannigan, because I don't think it would be, no one's necessarily voting against Dr. Hannigan. No one's necessarily voting against me. They're voting their preference. And so, to me, it just seems like, just like you were voting in an election booth, you're just marking one person, not a yea or a nee. So, to me, it seems that the vote should've been all in favor of Laura, okay? All in favor of Dr. Hannigan, okay? Voted four to three, Laura is the Vice Chair. That's, it seems to me, but however you want to do it, I just don't want to put anyone in a position of feeling that they've been voted against, and that there are four Board members or three Board members against the person who is or is not serving in that capacity.
Well, technically, Tim's right. However I conducted it, I conducted it a certain way. I did ask for a nominee, a second nomination, which occurred. Let me just ask the Board if they're comfortable with representing it that way, which is essentially the same outcome, is just representing it as, as Laura described. Tim, you made comments already. Any other comments?
So, you're not really revoting, you're just taking the margin?
We're just representing it in the record.
Okay. That's fine.
The only thing I'm feeling awkward about is technically, I took a motion and a second vote, and that's a vote that wasn't necessarily conducted. I believe we can't vote, vote twice.
You can rescind that motion. I think we're probably just making that too long.
Well, if you're, if you're wanting to follow, it's more complicated than it is. We just need to have a consensus, but if you want to take a motion off the table, the person who made the motion can rescind the motion.
I just...
I say leave it as it is. We've already voted. I mean, it's...
Okay.
That's my opinion. We voted, let's move on.
Yeah.
As the Board voted, I'm good with the vote. Let's keep going.
Okay. Are you guys online, good with just proceedings?
Yes, that's fine. That's fine, yeah, I agree.
Thank you. Okay. We will do that. And I almost feel I gotta apologize to Tim for the way I conducted the, really wouldn't manage to focus on everything, so, that's just a stumble on my part. Okay. Well, with that said, with that vote, I think we have a President and a Vice President. And with that, I would pass the gavel over to the Vice President.
Yeah.
Well, at least when you swing it, it won't be so close to the... So, it's, it's your main...
So, you're good. We've talked, we asked Dana if you're comfortable with it.
Right. I would just like to thank Mark for the last year and everything that you have done for the Board and trying to facilitate everything, and do you have any words of wisdom for us as you're departing the Chair?
No, I don't necessarily. I think sometimes I say too much, but I enjoy every minute, and I am happy that, I think we're still working together on some goals, and this is gonna be an interesting time coming out moving forward here with the election and with some of the issues that school has to address, so, I appreciate the time to, you guys allowed me to serve as President, and we'll see how we move forward. Thanks. Thank you, Mark.
Dana, did you want to say anything before we move forward?
No, nothing to thank Laura.
Okay. Are there any public comments? And correspondence? And I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I would so move.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved by Mark and seconded by Jennifer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Just a recommendation for Dr. Callen, if he could send these meeting dates to the candidates, so they have that on their calendars, especially, it looks like you're planning on having a retreat, the second, second meeting of the term, so, might be good that they have those dates and have them on their calendars. Just a suggestion.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 All opposed? That takes us to curriculum reports and the K-8 tech plan progress. Roxy and...
All right. I'm Roxy Schaefer, Director of Technology. I have with me tonight Lain Schifflbein, one of our technology coordinators, and our other technology coordinator that played a huge role in this K-8 update is Casey Wise, and he is off this month, off contract and out of town, so couldn't be here. So, we will move forward. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to kind of tell you what we've done this past year with our K-8 technology plan. So, kind of an overview of what it was, what you passed on October 9th, 2017, was to supply one-to-one iPads with grade kindergarten through, I'm sorry, actually, first grade through eighth grade. So, the first year, which was the year that we just finished, we put iPads out in fourth and fifth grade. Next year, that we're currently working on, iPads for third and sixth, and then we move out as, as you can see by the diagram. So, we're on a four-year cycle. One thing we did after, we did purchase as well was Showbee for all K-12 teachers. That's been a huge hit. But we also provided KH and Horace Good with the 2018 Senior iPads, 'cause as you can see, they're, they're years three and four on this. So, we're rolling out some of the Senior iPads to them to help them supplement their, their devices. And then we did the professional development that we laid out in the plan. So, fourth grade cards were delivered and were ready for use on the first day of school. I don't, this was completed a month ahead of schedule. When we talked to you before, not knowing how we were going to roll all this out, considering we already get 2,000 or 600 iPads for the high, high school freshmen, so we gave, gave ourselves a little time, but with the help of our interns, we have two interns that have been with us for years, and I almost hesitate to call them interns, because they're, they're, they just kind of know, there's no direction, and we truly have to give them any more, they just come in and get the job done. So, with the help of them and Casey and Laney, we were ahead a month on the schedule for that. So, then we're ready to go, first day of school. Fifth grade, fifth grade iPads were distributed the second link of September, and that was three weeks ahead of schedule. So, again, kudos to the group that, that put all the work into that. Fourth and fifth grade classrooms were equipped with Apple TVs, and then we repurposed the Senior iPads to the middle schools, and that was 270 of them, and we took some carts provided for those as well. I would like to note that the plan came in under budget, which was a huge plus in my books, and then we also, fourth and fifth grade, we did wireless upgrades to the infrastructure. We put access points in the classrooms. Back when we started wireless, we put access points in the hallways, and it kind of fanned out, and now that we're going one-to-one with the number of devices, we are moving them into the classrooms and adding. So, we did that with eRay dollars in fourth and fifth, and this summer, we're doing it for the sixth, for those classrooms that don't already have them.
One of the really big pieces to our plan was the professional development. So, you approved the plan in October of 2017. In January of 2018, we started our professional development with the fourth and fifth grade teachers. So, that's actually eight months before the iPads were gonna be in their classrooms. We started with a three-hour session, it was in district, it was a district in-service day, and we talked to them about the SAMR model, logistics, classroom management, paperwork that was gonna be done, kind of helped get them going. And on, in the April in-service day, we had a three-hour session, but we had 18 mini-sessions, where they got to pick what they wanted to go to. And then the spring semester, we did after-school professional development. We did those once a month. So, we had all the fourth grade teachers and all the fifth grade teachers come in, and we picked something that they had responded to on a survey that they wanted to learn about, and we built on that. And then, twice a month, we went out to the schools, and we sat down with the teachers during their planned time. It was totally individualized, because when you have a group of 60 teachers, it's really hard to individualize. You have two different grade levels, you have multiple content areas, so we wanted to address their specific needs. The fall semester, which would've been when they got their iPads, we continued after-school PD once a month. We met twice a month again with individualized PD. I think that was better, because they actually had them in the classroom, so when things came up, they were ready to. It's hard to ask questions about something you don't know yet, so I think that was really relevant. And then in September, we had three-hour sessions, we had the small group breakouts. We have our, our pilot teachers come help us, because those are actual classroom teachers. They have been through it, and they've provided a lot of valuable training for our teachers. And then we, in November, we did the same thing, multiple sessions, where people got to pick. We gave them a lot of different topics from which to pick. And then throughout this whole process, it wasn't, hey, you're scheduled on Monday, so I can't come see you until then. Anytime they had a problem, they picked up the phone, sent an email, somebody wanted to help them. And then, we also held technology meetings with the K-6 principals. I think we had three, three of them. And they provided us feedback, we shared with them some of our thoughts, they provided suggestions. And I think that helped move forward, because we got to see things from their perspective as well. And so, that was, last December, we kind of ended with them, except we were always on call. But we knew that we had to get ready for third and sixth grade, so in January, eight months before, third and sixth grade teachers got iPads, we started the same rotation of professional development with those teachers. So, we started in January, it was the same kind of training. It answered a lot of their questions. You know, how do we get the iPads to the kids? How do we get apps to the kids? What's the process for taking them home? And then, we did, the other thing that we did, Casey and I both attended the ELA adoption trainings. So, I did the high school and the K-4, Casey did five-day adoption. So, we went to the trainings with the teachers. We really wanted to be prepared for both the fifth, fourth and fifth, and then third and sixth, to help them integrate that technology management. We showed them apps and how to use them. Workflow was a huge one. That's where Showbee came in, how do we get that assignment to a kid? How do I provide feedback on it? How can the kids collaborate using that? And then the integration of the technology in the, in the instructional log. And then we did the twice-a-month with every teacher, fourth and sixth grade. This time, provided a little more guidance, because sometimes, you don't know what you don't know. So, when they would go to a training, then they might have questions, they would fill out a form, they would have a goal. The goal wasn't, "I want to learn," you show me. The goal might be, "I want my students to practice fluency, and I want to give them feedback, how can I do that?" So, that's when we stepped in and said, okay, here's some tools that you might want to use. So, it was very much individualized and helped them start integrating sooner. We also did surveys with teachers, parents, and students, and I've only highlighted some of the things, but these are our fourth and fifth grade student surveys. We asked them multiple questions. The kind of burnt orange color is the pre-survey data, before they had the one, excuse me, the one-to-one iPads. The yellow is after they'd had the iPads for a year. Some of the ones that really jumped out at me are, the first one, "I know how to use technology for learning." It wasn't, "I know how to use technology," it's, "I know how to use it for learning." So, you can see the pre-survey, 34 percent, but in the post-survey, 88 percent, "Yes, I can use it for learning now." The other one that really got me excited was the collaborate to solve problems. Pre-survey, 18 percent said they did that. And that makes sense. They didn't have an iPad to collaborate. With the iPad and the tools we provided, they could now work together and collaborate to problem-solve. This is again, this fourth and fifth grade student surveys, and if you look at them, a lot of it makes sense. The first one, "Taking notes." If you don't have an iPad to take notes on, you probably didn't take notes on my iPad. So, the second one, 64 percent, remember, these are fourth graders and fifth graders. Fourth graders don't take a lot of notes. The collaborate to problem-solve, that was an independent piece, and the one that really got me was, "I can work independently." So, that was 17 percent before they had the devices in the classroom. 97 percent said, "Yeah, I can work independently."
Present in class.
Oh, present in class. One of the great things about some of the tools we've given them is the ability to share. So, when you're doing something, it's normally, as a student, it's normally for an audience of one. If you write an essay, it's an audience of one. Well, that's not reality. We should have a bigger audience for our kids, and they take pride in their work. So, before the iPads, 5 percent of the students said they had presented to their class at some point. We had 52 percent say, "Yeah, I've had an opportunity to present to the class." It might've been a daily homework assignment, it might've been a large project, but using some of our tools, the kids could seamlessly share with the whole class. This was on the teacher survey, the fourth and fifth grade teachers, so, the first day they met with us in January, we said, and I lost some numbers, in the pre-survey, "Are you comfortable using technology for instruction?" It was about 50/50. Afterwards, the post-survey, it was overwhelmingly, "Yeah, we're really comfortable using technology now." That, I think that speaks volumes to what our pilot teachers did for our teachers, what the PD did, what their peers did for each other. They feel very comfortable now using it. The, we asked about the increase in student use. The yellow is, I'm sorry, the bottom one, the pre-survey was, "How often do you use the technology in the classroom?" And it was, the yellow is weekly, and the green is daily. So, that's the pre-survey. The post-survey shows that 96 percent of our teachers said they use the technology daily in instruction. The 4 percent, I think, comes from some of the specials, the PE teacher, band teacher, maybe a PE teacher, the art teacher, so they didn't use it as much. We also asked the teachers, "What were the three main purposes of student technology use?" Before, the one-to-one initiative testing was the main purpose of using technology, followed by internet access and online programs. At the post, it was content-specific apps, and then testing, and then research. So, the dynamics in the classroom started to change. There were actually about eight options they had, but these were the three highest ranking.
Can you go back to that last slide, please? Sorry. I want to make sure I understand.
I want to make sure I understand the slide. So on the, on the.
This is.
Okay. I had it back. That's why it wasn't making sense. Thank you. Like, I got, sorry.
And then we asked, we did a parent's survey. And these are the two things that really jumped out at me. The pre-survey is the burnt orange. The kind of gold is post. So we said, how important is it for students to learn techno, learn to use technology? Extremely or very important. Before their kids were in the initiative, fifty-two percent said it's extremely and very important. But at the end, they, eighty-nine percent changed and said, no, it is extremely and very important. Some weren't important. Pre was forty-five. Eleven percent post, because most of those moved over to the extremely important. And then the not important, pre was three percent and zero percent on the post-survey. And then we get asked a lot, well, what do you do if kids don't have internet at home? And I believe there were three hundred and seventy respondents, if I recall the number right on this question, and ninety-three percent had internet at home and three percent did not. So, and then the other question was, if you don't have it, do you have someplace to get it? That data was really skewed because it seemed like everybody wanted to answer it. But if you have internet at home, you shouldn't have answered. So that data was a little bit skewed. Okay, so we're not resting. We're moving forward. So August is coming pretty quick. And we have a PD day for our third and sixth grade teachers. And what we've saved for that day is called Apple Classroom. It's a classroom management tool where the teacher can see what the kids are doing on her iPad or his iPad and can log students into a specific app that they can't leave. So it's a management piece, and they're very excited. We didn't give that to them before because they didn't have a classroom to use it with. And if you don't use it, you don't remember it. So we'll also prepare for things like, um, some of the procedures to go through. They start off training them right at the beginning. The third-grade classrooms already have their iPads in them right now. They're ready to go. The fifth grade are ready, and they're back in the back room. But we won't get those out until after we give freshmen iPads out in August. And then we go straight to the, the fifth grade. But we'll be doing breakout mini sessions as well. I got a lot of feedback, and I read them on the My Learning Plan, about what they would like to see coming. So based on that is how I want to prepare for the teachers coming in. We will then, after we get with them, we'll schedule our after-school PD sessions, what works for them. We will have professional development during those just quite in-service days. And then, once again, we go out to the classrooms and visit the teachers individually. So we're gearing up to focus on third and sixth. Fourth and fifth are not being forgotten. They know that we will always be there to support them. We have teachers in every building that are great support. But we can, we can help them with what they call working out.
That's this August, right?
I'm sorry?
That's this August?
That starts in August, yes.
Twenty nineteen?
This August. What? It says twenty twenty. Well, I meant the first semester of the school year, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Oh, it says August. Wait, please, you should have. Not then. Rossi edited.
So that's where we are.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay, Dana.
And it's a little bit popping on my end. You may have already covered it. I know you said that you did the surveys. And you mentioned three hundred and seventy responses. Do you know what percent of the population, both with teachers and parents, returned the survey?
All the teachers did. We had seventy-three respondents for the teachers. And that was all of the fourth and fifth grade teachers. For parents, that's hard because they may have kids in more than one building. They might have a fourth grader at Georgia Math Views and a fifth grader at Stones, and they only took it, I think they only took it one time, probably. But I don't know what percent. We typically figure around five fifty.
We get great response from, from.
The elementary schools.
The elementary schools, because they'll do it right during parent-teacher conferences. So as.
And is that an on, is that an online survey?
It is.
The teacher generally just gives them the iPad and asks them to quickly take this while they're there.
Okay, and, I'm sorry, you're kind of breaking up, so I'm hearing most of what you're saying. Does the survey, did it have a question like, do teachers feel like it has improved their teaching? Or in or improved student learning? Is there any question like that on the survey?
No, we didn't have a question like that.
Did you say no?
Right, no.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Yeah, she said there was no question like that.
Okay, thank you. You sounded really well, Mark.
Any other questions, Dana?
No, that's good, thank you.
Jean, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for the update. It's much appreciated. Civic engagement, Linda, is that you?
Sorry, I just turned.
I'm fine. Rossi, Rossi took care.
There it is. I'm wondering what.
No, not it up there.
I'll go with the one for right now.
All righty. I'm going to present an overview of our civic engagement activities for this last year. Civic engagement, this is the definition that the state has adopted for our schools. And the sharing part is the most important part, is that the students are sharing, or anyone in the community is sharing their skills and knowledge to help the community.
Can I interject here for a second? First, apologies. We had hoped to present on both these things to the board in May or June. But since things got busy, and I think we had a weather rush one time, things kind of got out of whack. So would have been great to have Casey Wise here for the last presentation, and Steve Nordby and Skyla Weykamp planned to be here. But Mr. Nordby actually is out of town on vacation. And Skyla had a family emergency come up, so she couldn't be here. So, so sorry that you, you won't get the benefit of those people being here. But we're, we're kind of trying to play catch-up for things before we get things to the spread.
And I'm sorry, I'm going back to the first slide. I don't recall seeing the PowerPoint in my board packet. Did I miss it? So I'm just wondering if we want to read the definition.
I didn't read it.
Okay. I was trying to download it and it's having technical problems. Jean and Dana, do you have the PowerPoint?
I do. I do.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And I can read through if we need to. Why do we need to approve civic engagement? The Kansas Civic Advocacy Network did a survey of all states. And this is how Kansas ranked in these areas. And there were multitude of pages of different things that they surveyed. But these are some of the things that the state picked out and said, wow, we can address some of this through talking to our kids and working with our kids. When I looked through this, just to clarify, I was a little confused about twenty-third in voting, yet forty-first in voter turnout. The one was the actual turnout. The, that was the twenty-third in voting. The forty-first in voter turnout for local elections, that was a survey that they did of the community saying, do you go to the primary? Do you go to the election? And it was actually a survey of people in Kansas, speaking for how they would, they see themselves voting. But then when they actually voted, it was the twenty-three percent, or twenty-third in the nation. Schools, our schools have recognized the importance of engaging with the community. We have a lot of different things going on in the, in the schools. Veterans Day breakfast at KH, that is what this is a picture of. Fundraising for leukemia at Edith Sherman, National Read Aloud at Charles Stone, Student Council float in, was burned in its heads. Those are just some of the examples. And we've got some pictures here of those. This was the coin race for Lethemah at Edith Sherman. Lots of times they have races by homeroom. And there's a little award, it's a party or something like that. So. This was our breakfast with our officers. I don't see any donuts there. I can say that because I'm very chock hop, so. Hosting our civic leaders, Collier, Sandy Cobble. This was toys at Christmas time, toys for toddlers kind of activity. Miles for smiles. This was a partnership with the high school. Civic engagement is considered the sixth outcome of the Kansas Vision for Education. So in all of the areas that the state is wanting us to look at and work on, this is one of their, their high priorities. Two Garden City schools were recognized, and Steve mentioned those. Steve Nordby at the high school was wanting to be here, and Skyla Weykamp at Florence. Those were our, our two schools that were recognized. Florence Wilson received the School of Promising Practice Award. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like. And Garden City received the School of Excellence Award. The Civic Advocacy Network, last year was the first year that that was actually in place. The state started that to recognize schools that are doing a good job of civic engagement. And they want to look at what exemplary practices are going on across the state, and how can we help other schools get there? So if you notice, they want to promote that civic engagement as part of the school experience. It's just like any other curriculum area. The more you practice it, the better you can come at it. So they're hoping that by bringing this into the schools and having the schools work on this and promote civic activities, that the students then learn that, they carry that into their adult world and their adult life. And they want to be proud of their community and those types of activities. Six proven practices of effective civic learning. These are the six areas that the state says that if the schools are doing this, then they are promoting civic engagement. And this is what the schools were rated on that made it to the top list of the CAMHS network. Winners are in the network for three years. So the high school will be in that network then for three years. And part of that responsibility comes then at, by going out and presenting to other schools about what they do and sharing how to promote that in other schools. And then after three years, and they can reapply, saying, this is how we continue our civic engagement, and this is how we share with other schools. This is the list of the CAMHS award winners, last year being the first year of this award.
Can I ask just to remind, for a reminder, what did they receive? Is this a cash award, or was this?
No. It was, it was a recognition and training, and then presenting at the conference. And here, they, they actually got a trip to Topeka out of it. That's where the, the conference was and the presentation, the award. They got the banner there at the high school. So here they are getting their award. And of course, we have Casey, Dr. Watson. He is, he is a social butterfly. This slide is the high school then turning around and presenting at the conference. So they've already started with their first presentation to other schools on how to build that capacity in those other schools. Some schools were recognized for promising practice. So they took those six areas and they said, wow, they did really well in, in all of these, but maybe not as well with this one. And those schools then got the Promising Practices Award. Promising Practices, this is where Florence Wilson came in. And here they are accepting their, their award. And they also got to go to Topeka.
Do they go out and teach also? Are they on a three-year rotation?
No.
They just, do they have to reply next year?
And I think they're actually hoping to move up a step for next year. So we have several schools that I think are planning on applying for this year. All of our schools do some activity. It's kind of a building decision. But I think this will be a bit of a motivating.
And what schools did the high school go on, visited, did they try?
They went to the state conference and presented at the state conference. So it was, any schools that came and attended, they could go to their presentation.
Any other questions? Dana, do you have any questions?
I have, uh, he's actually called Wade, and he did, I didn't know.
Okay. Jean, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. That moves us to new business and policy G A H B provision for screening, Dr. Carlin or Mr. Hogan?
Dr. Carlin. So we had discussion in several earlier board meetings about policy G A H B. And the board have given some direction in terms of where you wanted this policy to go. So this is a draft, an effort to kind of capture that direction to first reading. Key points being, really trying to maintain the, the practice that we've been using probably for the last twenty-five years. But to make the policy more clear, so it reflected that. And then also to make it obvious that the board did have the authority to intervene in these situations as well. So hopefully, that is, that's what I heard from the discussion. So hopefully, I heard correctly. And this accurately represents what you're interested in. Not asking for action tonight. But if you have any questions or suggestions, then as a board, certainly want to hear those. Otherwise, this will be on the consent agenda at a future meeting for approval.
Any questions or comments right now? Dana, do you have any?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Jean, do you have any?
No, thank you.
Then we'll look for this at a future meeting. Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Time for board open discussion. And I'm going to mix things up a little bit. I'm going to start with Dr. Han again. So Mr. Curry's this time.
I actually don't have anything else.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to throw in there that I got to, I think it at ten, but I got to witness a lot of the summer schools and activities going on. What's the reading one called?
K R.
Yeah. Magic's Hope and the Pony Partners are out. And I think they got to go to about every school that was conducting summer school and the K R schools. And if you aren't sure what the Pony Partners is, Sarah Brown is also a teacher in the district, has two miniature horses. And then Kayla Womar also directs the therapy down to ten. And they go and visit the schools and take books. And they'll talk about the horses and, and how to be around them. And the kids will get to pet them. And they also read to the kids. And they, every kid that is there takes home one or two books. So we're getting, it's a good community partnership where we're reading books and giving hands to kids. I just wanted to thank them for taking the time to do that because they, it's completely volunteer. And so they just seem to spend their summers sitting on the beach or something like that. But they're still involved with the schools and that. But they're still involved with the schools and reminding kids how corporate reading is. So I wanted to thank them for that.
Mark, do you have anything?
Not much, maybe mention one thing, and I'll, I won't get the name correct, but I believe culinary arts team, the high school, once had won a national award, so I remember that just this last week. But it was, I think it was culinary arts, F C C L A, what was it, something? I think that was at F C C L A, yeah. And so there was at least one individual and maybe one or two teams that got top of the nation, which is pretty impressive. So at some point in time, I'm sure we'll hear more about that, but since it's very timely, they just flew back in from that competition, and so that's pretty impressive.
Right. I don't have all the details today, but I know we've been in contact with Mr. or Dr. Singh, and we were planning on having some kids come to a head meeting to be recognized for their accomplishments, so.
We have one fairly new instructor, and one retired but continues to consult. And it's a powerful team, and the kids are doing very well. I look forward to learning more.
And our culinary program did give me a lead fifty designation this year, so I don't remember how many years that's been, but it's in the five or six range, just to be honest. It's a big deal in, in, in the industry nationally, as an industry. And preparing our kids for that, I think, is something we had at one point in time, some, some pretty admirable activities coordinated with the community college. And the community college sort of took a, a different direction. And I'm kind of hoping that in our conversations with the community college, there could be some, at least some discussions to see if there's opportunity to build not only the success of a high school, but bridging for kids into community college. Thank you.
Sounds like they've been doing the wrestling team a month for their money, since wrestling, what, only did four years, and F C C L A did five or six?
I mean, it's a pretty big deal, yeah, so.
Tim, do you have anything? Jeanne, do you have anything?
No, I, I don't, thank you.
Dana, do you have anything?
I can just piggyback on Jennifer, just, you know, all these amazing activities that go on in the summer. I've just seen a lot of things on Facebook too, with teachers going to a lot of schools and doing other trainings. So, you know, summertime fun, but summertime also, a lot of learning and working. And, you know, I'm just amazed about all that our teachers staff put their time and effort into even over the summer. So I just appreciate that, and just wanted to know this.
I went to the K A S P meeting, and I think I discussed that recently on this. But it looks like they're making some progress in trying to make sure that they stay on top of making sure of being, the, the organization people go to for information, and trying to find ways to be more creative and not just stagnant in how they're doing things. And it sounds like they're making some really good progress on that. And then the executive committee also put forth a statement with, with regard to what was going on along the border in support of the National School Board Association's statement as well. Not necessarily taking a side one way or another with regard to it, but more addressing that these kids could find their way into Kansas schools and try to give your other way to address the needs that they'll have if, if and when they come to Kansas. So that was sent out as well, probably about a week or so ago. And that's all that I have. So the next board meeting will be here at the Board Education Room on Monday, July twenty-second at 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. It moved by Mark, it's seconded by Jennifer. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, ladies, for joining us on the phone, and it's funny, I need to gabble out.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Aye.